Good evening, colleagues and guests. This is September 20th, 2021. Regular meeting of the Mount Horev area school districts. Board of Education shall come to order. And note that this is our last full Board of Education meeting scheduled to meet in the high school. In October, our full meetings will resume in the middle school staff room. Roll call Diana?
Here.
Jessica?
Here.
Leah?
Here.
Jeff?
Here.
Rod?
Here.
And Jim?
Here.
Shelby has this meeting been properly nominated and certified?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, well, please join me in the virtual event. And my token is to declare the United States of America and to the Republic for the peace, the one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you. Leah, would you please read our mission statement this evening?
The Mount Horev area school district partnership with its community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all who are preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society.
Thank you, Leah. Item 2A, a perma of the presented revised agenda. Are there any revision requests from the board?
No.
Motion made by Jeff and seconded by Leah to approve the agenda as presented. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion passes. Item 2B, a perma of the September 7th, 2021 board meeting and executive section minutes. Motion made by Jeff and seconded by Diana to approve the September 7th minutes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion passes. Item 3A, school news. Dr. Salerno.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to see you all in the audience. I want to extend a note of gratitude to Jesse, who's on the boards for us tonight. I was reminded that we should just turn on our microphones when we're ready to speak tonight, and then, of course, when we're done, we can just turn those off. Grateful to you, Jesse, for all your help tonight. Thank you so much. Homecoming week. You may have heard, seeing students dressing in their pajamas today, some of them dressing in the decades or dressing like their parents. Tomorrow, I think, is superhero day at the IC. Just a lot of really great activities, both during the school day but also in the evening as we wish our Vikings very well. You know, with the pandemic, we've had to pivot a little bit as we do some of our preparations for homecoming week observances. We'll have our pep rallies in our stadium this year. So instead of our band going out to our students, our students are going to come to our band, and it looks like we're going to have a glorious day. Seventy-two and sunshine. Hopefully, the weather man is feeling fine and doesn't spoil our plans, right? So we've got that going for us, and then, of course, a big game, not just our football game, but all of our games, whether it be volleyball, soccer. Cross Country King had a wonderful run this weekend. A big, big week. And then, also, I want to take note of the fact that we're moving our dance out to Grundel Park, under the stars, under a bit of a tent. We'll have a lot of fun. So that will happen on Saturday night. You know, if you don't mind me just referencing that on October 6th, we're having a very special evening. Really, that the conversation is about what do we as a Mount Horev area school community expect of our schools as it relates to the topic of race and equity. And tomorrow, I'll be placing in our board recap an invitation to everyone in our community on a virtual event that will take place from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. on October the 6th. The event will begin with an overview around what is currently happening as it relates to race and equity within our curriculum, within our schools, and then participants will have an opportunity to break out into smaller groups for the purpose of letting their voices be heard. This is going to mirror an activity that we're doing with our students that will take place on a week from today, Monday, the 27th of September, during their advisory time. The link to register for this event is on our district's webpage, on what we call our splash page. You see a couple banners kind of cross over. You might see a pretty colorful one with some hands. We'd love it if you could join us there. And then, looking even further into the future, October is an important month for us for many reasons, but this one has to do with some work that we're going to be doing with our library media specialists and our school resource officer. And this has to do with October the 19th. I'm just going to pull up the details if you don't mind. I wrote them out on my screen. It's Keeping Kids Safe Month online, and as we know, our kids do have more access to devices now more than ever, more screen time, maybe a little more curiosity on those devices, and more access really to the unknown. And so we're going to be working together to provide a presentation to any and all interested families, students, about how to be safe online, what are prudent steps that we can take as parents to protect our kids from what I'll call internet predators. So I'm just really grateful for a lot of great things that are happening in our schools this week. Our kids continue to shine.
Thank you, Dr. Salerno. How about board members? Any swanos to share here? Yes, Leah?
So the Mount Horev K-5 PTO is attempting to meet and function this school year. We have a Bucky Book fundraiser right now that we can get to from our Facebook page, and we also are delaying the e-handle. We are canceling a lot of our actual fun events that we like to hold, just to keep it safer. So if you feel like supporting the Mount Horev K-5 PTO through something else, though, we can't wait to see.
Thank you, Leah. Hard work being done there. Anyone else have updates to share for us? All right, let's move on to item 3B, citizens' comments. Dr. Salerno, are there any to register?
I don't think we have anyone. No, thank you, Shelby.
All right, we do offer a second citizens' comment portion at the end of the meeting. Moving on to item 4A, personnel transactions. Dr. Salerno, any remarks about these?
Just one, and we have an addendum tonight.
Motion made by Jeff and seconded by Leah to approve the personnel transactions and
addendums. Is there any further discussion or questions? Do we have one question? Is esports new this year? Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Wow, this is great. So, you know, we're always looking for ways in which we can reach out to kids, and our middle school art teacher extraordinaire has found a way to do that, just a gym. And he's been attending a number of meetings around the state, around the region, to see what it takes to begin developing competition for esports. So the kids will play video games, really thinking about strategic efforts, thinking about what skills it takes to write this kind of software. He's really taken it to the next level. I think we had about 50 kids join in with us at the first meeting. So we've got a little seed money going for them so that they can get the program off to the ground and continue seeing the kids do good things.
That's nice. Further questions?
I have a question. We saw that chess club is on there as well. Was there really a lot started this year, right?
I think we've had chess before.
I think it's been a good number of years since we've had it.
You're right. The gentleman who is doing that left the district, and I think now, you're right, they are bringing it back. I thought for some reason that's a great game, too.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, turning to our motion and second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion passes. Item 5, our consent agenda. Would any board members like to pull out letters A through C to remark individually?
Second.
Motion made by Diana and seconded by Jeff to improve the consent agenda. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion passes. Moving on to our discussion items. Item 6A, our committee member reports. Mr. Hayes, I know that you didn't have a community legislative engagement meeting last month, but I know we have some community events coming up. Perhaps you'd like to mention those or any other updates that you may have.
Sure, thank you. I'd like to mention two things. And I should say that Jessica and I are working very closely together on these two things. She's a terrific, terrific partner in crime. We've been working together on a letter or a series of letters to the community about the school portion of the state budget and its impact on our budget. And we've been working on what are the different buckets from which we want to really communicate more effectively with the village board. So we look forward to a meeting that's coming up soon and to having something that we can present to the committee at that meeting to run through and to dissect, and then hopefully out of that discussion will come something that we can bring to the board.
Anything else, Mr. Hayes?
No, I think that's it.
Okay, questions for Rod? All right, keep up the good work, you two. Mrs. Rothmer, your report for finance.
Yes, finance.
All right, I beg your pardon. Mrs. Rothmer, your report for education, please.
So again, education, we discussed our standing agenda topics, curriculum updates, we focused on the professional development that will be upcoming for the school year. Talked a little bit about how my school staff, they will be getting some professional development from CISA regarding their switch from 400 to 65, and how they can best set those classes up for success. So that should be very interesting for that group. Talked about technology and the 6 through 12 graders have optional classes that they can bring their own in, and then 6 through 9 are assigned their private. We also talked a lot about private insurance, how if you have a school fund, you should definitely think about purchasing a form of insurance. But that window might close...
It's the 30th.
The 30th, yeah, that's it. We also talked about equity. We've got some engagement sessions that are coming up on October 6th, I believe, because that is coming through soon, 6 to 7:30, I believe, which is a heavy, so 5:00, 5:00 is my 10:00. There are also some other sessions that are going to be focused sessions, so I believe those are exciting. And then, we spoke a lot about high school science, very, very fun session. We talked about the department's efforts to ensure that earth and space teachers are provided to students within their current coursework. There's interest within the department on consolidating some classes and possibly moving on physical science. But that's off tonight through this time. And we spent a lot of time on that discussing how the most of the courses talk about course and options.
Thank you, Diana. Questions for Diana? All right, then we're going to move on to our slate of information advocacy report from the very capable Mrs. Strunka. Sarah, if you'd like to move down to the microphone, you can start us off with 6B AP courses. Make sure this is... This one seems like it's on. It is, thank you. So you received in your board packet the information advocacy report looking at access and performance on college prep coursework for learners. I'm going to, I know within the agenda, it's marked with each indicator, but do you mind if I, through my report, go through each? Please go through. Okay, thank you. We know that the end of the 1920 and the 2021 school year were challenging for staff and for students. Our school staff and teachers were keeping an eye on the prize and having a high instructional level for all students, and they were looking for ways to make students successful, and in the AP world, that's even a greater leap. We're looking at the reduced time that students had and the high birth schedule as well, but our students and our staff shown. We have felt, though, the effects of COVID in some ways, so I'm going to go through those and I'm going to be talking mainly through those in my report tonight. So when we talk, when we look at the percentage of students taking at least one AP course in their high school career, we actually saw an increase in students taking AP courses. In the 1920 school year, the year that COVID hit, we had 229 students taking AP courses, and students were coming into the 2021 school year knowing that it was going to be virtual for a good portion of it at the high school level, and we still saw an increase in the number of students taking AP courses. So I think that's, I know that's a testament to our students who know our staff so well that they knew that they would prepare them for the coursework. We take a look at those students in indicator two. So these are the students who actually take the AP test. So just because you take an AP course doesn't necessarily mean you're going to take the AP test, but there we did see a drop when compared to previous years. Historically, about 90% of students who take an AP class take the AP test, but we did see that drop last year. In the 1920 school year, we had 205 students out of 229, so about that 90% go on to take the AP test. However, in the 2021 school year, we saw 184 students out of 268, so about 69% take the AP test. In talking to Principal Cody Lundquist, you know, kids were worried, even though they had their teachers pulling from, their teachers giving them information via Google Classroom and other resources, they still weren't quite sure about how they would do on the AP test. So we did see a decrease there. We also saw a decrease in, on figure one, in the percentage of total Mount Horev students who scored a three or higher. So again, I think you're feeling the effects of the decrease of instructional minutes that the kids were provided. But in light of that, I was thankful that Molly Bilsey, one of our high school teachers and one of our high school AP teachers, forwarded me a report as of June 2021, talking about what happens if students get a one or a two. And the AP College Board had some findings. The first finding was that AP students, regardless if they get a one, two, three, four, or five, are more likely to enroll in a four-year institution. So just taking that AP course still is an indicator that kids will go on to a four-year college if that fits for them. Also, the AP originally shared that students with a score of three or higher, so a three, four, or five, on an AP test were prepared for introductory coursework. Well, in further review, the AP has found, AP College Board has found that students who have a two or higher are also prepared. So that was nice to see as well. And lastly, the third finding related to pathways in progress was that even students who score a one or a two will continue to take further AP courses and score higher on them later. So that's a silver lining I see when we look at the number of students who scored a three or above being reduced and the number of students who maybe took the AP test. Those numbers are lower, too. Having these findings was a nice piece to add to our discussion as well. I'll stop at AP, and then I'll talk about dual credit. Jessica?
Sarah, how, when do students learn about AP courses? Does the first time in eighth grade or is it prior to them? I just wonder, like, the AP class is structured different, the homework load is different, so like, preparing students when they're younger, like, ooh, this is going to be an opportunity. Like, how does that build so that then, you know, they're kind of prepared for and hesitant, have it in their mind, like, it's something I'm going to do in high school?
Yeah, I know when the students go through their four-year plan, and the students come over in eighth grade to the high school mid-year, they do learn about coursework, figuring out their four-year plan, and AP is part of the presentation by the teachers. Then, when our students have conference meetings, freshman, sophomore, junior year with their school counselors, that pathway can also be brought up. It's always a piece within our high school course description handbook. There is a full AP section there that students can look at. I do know Cody Lundquist, our principal, has been looking at setting up more career pathways or academies that the students can really map out if they want to go into this field or this field or this field, regardless of if it's a two-year or a four-year, setting that coursework up as well for those students so they understand that pathway. So there's been current work and there's future work in the works.
And then, my only quick question is, like, we have a good amount of AP classes, you know, in different topic areas. I just wondered if there was any that we were like, ooh, it would be nice if we could do this one, or maybe this one, kids aren't just taking that much anymore. Like, if there's any kind of shifting of the one and what we offer?
Besides the school that we have, we offer quite a few AP courses, about three, well, okay, I take that back, about four years ago, and I should have added this to my previous answer, four years ago, AP World History was added. So there was a need. John Malaki and the social studies team came and talked to me, and then we brought the education committee eventually about having that AP World History class for sophomores. So that's our first sort of sophomore AP class. And then we also added AP Computer Science a couple years ago. Didn't run initially because we didn't have enough student number, and that's also a driving factor, but that course is running this semester and this year. So looking at the need, looking at what advanced level coursework we have already, and can an AP course fill that need as well? We don't want, also, it's that balance of having the AP coursework but also some higher, higher level coursework and our FTE.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. Am I going to dual credit? Great. The last indicator, looking at that increasing access and performance for college prep work, is dual credit. So dual credit means that a student can take a course within Mount Horev High School, and we have our staff teaching that course, but that course has its proficiency standards, its objectives, its scope and sequence, its syllabus matching up with the Madison College course or another technical college course. And on table five, you'll see the dual enrollment course information. Sorry, it's split out two pages. I really tried hard not to do this, but just didn't work out well on this report. That throughout, throughout from 1415 all the way to 2021, we have seen an increase in dual credit enrollment for our students. It's on the last page in the green rows. From the year 1415 that I have on here with 61 students, and in this past school year, we're up to 153. So also looking to increase those dual credit and dual enrollment courses as well. I did not put it in this report, but if you remember back from previous reports on the same topic, the credentialing and the standard for our teachers has gone up. You either need a master's or you need a certain amount of hours in that field. So our staff members have been working towards that so that they can continue or add on dual credit opportunities as well, because that's been a goal since I've been here, is to look and try and find ways to increase dual enrollment, because we want to make sure students who have aspirations for a program and a two-year college to be able to receive those credits, just like AP students can receive credits as well. So we're continuing to look at that. I had a great discussion with Pam Allen regarding this, because Egg Welding 1 and Egg Welding 2 are dual credit courses, and she's really trying to find ways to make sure or to see if we can bring that to Mount Horev. But with Egg Welding, it's a good example, there's really a lot of lab time that the students would need. So trying to figure out how those lab hours at a college level can fit into a high school schedule has been challenging for her, but only Pam, she will definitely figure it out. And then they're also looking at some other science classes that could be dual credit as well, because we don't have many science classes at this point. We'd like to add on to those. That's all I have. Questions for Sarah, board members? Sarah, this is really remarkable amount of work that you've put together for us. Thank you so much. Well, to all our staff, so thank you. Really appreciate you. Thank you for your time. Hi, Dr. Salerno. It's time for a latest COVID-19 update.
Good evening. Before we move on to that, I'd just like to express a note of gratitude to Pam Allen. She just completed her master's degree for this very purpose, and so I want to extend a note of gratitude to her and congratulations. That's a lot of work. A couple of items related to COVID. Well, as expected, we are seeing increases in our need to quarantine. The dashboard that was produced last Tuesday demonstrated that for our community. We continue to work to have that up and going by Tuesday, late afternoon, early evening for families. Many families who I see out and about in the community are asking, you know, what can we do to help? We know we want to stay in school as much as possible, and that really truly is asking people to make certain that they're not sending their kids to school with symptoms. How do you know what symptoms there might be? Well, we have this handy-dooey little Viking pledge that we put together off our district's website that people can look at and just kind of ask themselves these questions, ask their students these questions, and if they have two or more of the symptoms that are noted, then it might be worthy of taking a beat and considering whether or not attending school that day or going to get maybe a COVID test is the right thing to do. Communication to family remains in accordance with the PHMDC recommendations. However, we know that this may not be satisfactory to all families right now, particularly anyone who believes that they should have more notification made to them. Their desire to know versus our ability to share are two different things, and I recognize the conundrum therein, families are, because they're trying to do the right thing, they're worried about their own kids, I'm a dad, too, but there are also limitations as to what we can do. So we're continuing to balance that when it might be appropriate to depart from PHMDC's recommendations versus risking families dropping their guard. If we constantly notify people that there is a quarantine taking place in the classroom that's not really related to them because it doesn't meet the definition of PHMDC, we worry that that constant communication might cause people to just feel like, oh, it's overly communicated, we're dropping our guard. So we are right now continuing to follow the recommendations for that process through PHMDC. We are regularly updating our COVID information website with the most up-to-date information that we receive, and so that, again, is information that's found off the district's main website. A drive-through testing, that is still happening. Like most employers these days, they've really suffered with staffing shortages. And I'm pleased to announce here tonight that late, late, late this afternoon, we had a conversation with Accelerated Labs, Accelerated Analytical, and we've been pushing, thanks to CJ and Brian, and I'll even throw my name in the hat on that one. And we will hopefully start, they have enough staff, to hopefully start a quasi-drive-in program starting next Tuesday now. This would likely not be a drive-through. I say quasi because they don't have the mobile units, vehicles, to produce the drive-in system that they have in other school districts around the state. So we're going to try to use our district office, and there's a separate entryway into the conference room and a separate exitway out of the conference room, so that way we can provide the testing. We're going to try to free up some parking spaces on the north side of East Lincoln Street so families can just come in and if we need to go out there and provide the testing if the person's not feeling well enough to do so. Our goal is to have that happen Monday through Friday, 8:30 in the morning till about 1:30 in the afternoon. In the meantime, in tomorrow morning's board recap and then on some of our social media platforms, you will have seen a list of local pharmacies and organizations that are providing that testing. Brian, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but it's my understanding that if a student tests today positive for COVID, conceivably, they'd be able to, or they've been quarantined, I should say, for COVID, they would be able to utilize this new system on Tuesday because that will have been day six or seven, and if they have a COVID-free test result, they would be eligible to return back on day eight. Is that your understanding?
Yeah, so if somebody would test positive today, we might have tomorrow, next week, Tuesday would be, you know, the seventh or eighth, about the sixth or seventh day, that would bring that in. So kind of the new cases that we just are finding out about would be able to fall.
And then, last but not least, one that we've been reading and studying a great deal about, we're watching President Biden's mandatory vaccination request or that proof of testing at least once a week. The agency tasked with overseeing that is the Occupation, Safety, and Health Administration, OSHA, and we're coming to find out in our readings that OSHA does not have jurisdiction over public entities, and as such, much of what we're reading on this topic is for us to hit the pause button. And that might be a little different than what we're... And that might be a little different than what we're seeing around the region, I know, of two school districts. One, this meeting right now at this very moment, making likely the decision to require mandatory testing, excuse me, mandatory vaccination and/or weekly testing for individuals. Given our high vaccine response rate among staff, we are really advising at this point the district to hold tight. And we'll continue to monitor this. And we know that there's a lot of angst around this for some, but know that we're on it. And if we need to continue to advocate with the board to make a change in practice, our team is prepared to, to do that. But at this point, we're just letting you know that we're still studying, we're still researching it. We suspect that a lot of this is going to come from admin regs that come from the federal government out of OSHA and might likely be contested in some way at the judicial levels. I'm pleased to answer any questions you may have.
Dr. Salerno, I know you've said it before, but what is the cost for students and faculty for the drive-through testing?
Oh, very good. I should have said that. Yes, it's free of charge with the Department of Health Services.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Salerno. We appreciate that. Let's move on to our action items and policy work. We'll be starting with a series of second readings for Mr. Johnson. Come up to the mic and we'll take a look at 78, Policy 431 from compulsory school attendance. Again, this is the second reading. Have any new questions arisen?
Again, I'd just like to thank Melissa Hansen and Talisa Corcoran for a lot of the legwork on this grant or this policy. As you probably have seen it and you saw the red line version, almost the entire thing has changed. And it's the eliminating of an additional policy. So we'll be moving along to administrative regulations so we can change them but make the policy simple and effective and what we can follow around on the legal law.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions for the board? Natalie entertain a motion to approve? Motion made by Jeff, seconded by Jessica, to approve Policy 431. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed say nay. Motion passes. 7B, as Brian mentioned, the removal of Policy 431.1, which will now be in this rate of regulation. Further questions for Brian? I'll entertain a motion for removal. Motion made by Jeff and seconded by Jessica to remove Policy 431.1. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed say nay. Motion passes. 7C, a second reading of 447.1. Any new questions for Brian here? And I'll entertain a motion. Motion made by Jessica and seconded by Diana to approve Policy 447.1. Further discussion?
Yeah, there was a very thoughtful question that was raised earlier this evening around this topic as it relates to school resource officer. Brian, can I ask you, please, to speak for that about our admin regs?
Yeah, and so a question I got earlier tonight was about the SRO because in the previous policy, and it remains in this policy, is that the, the law specifically does not include law enforcement officers working in the school. However, when you'll see the administrative regulations, we do hold them to the same quality and standard that we do our teachers. And so if they would, by chance, which we would, again, hope that it wouldn't happen, but if they would restrain a student, they would still follow the same process as our, as our educational staff.
Thanks, Brian. Any further discussion from the board? Returning to the motion and second on the floor. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed say nay. Motion passes. Thank you so much, Brian.
Thank you very much.
Right on to 7D. Miss, someone would like to step forward. This is our first reading of our social media policy.
Good evening and thank you. So tonight I bring to you from our personnel committee from a while back. The social media policy, this is something that has been worked on for quite a while. And we've got a nice final draft here for your, your, as, we know that there's a lot of really great benefits that we get from social media and just wanting to provide some parameters around that and really looking to brand our social media for the school district so that we can build our awareness, build our brand and get that communication out to individuals in the community about what's going on in our districts. And so this policy really focuses on helping to build that identity and brand. And also talks a little bit around some of this personal use of social media as well for our staff to help protect them as well. We know our staff are doing a really phenomenal job already, so this is just helping to solidify what they're already doing, a really great job at. And I do want to note that this focuses on social media that's more for that communication about activities and events and things. It is not for instructional purposes. So it will not cover things like Google Classroom, CSAT, and those sorts of tools that are used for education purposes with students.
Questions for Sarah? Jessica's made a motion to approve and Jeff has seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Say first, please. Aye, beg your pardon. Thank you. Go to a roll call vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Liam?
Aye.
Jessica?
Yes.
And IBS. Thank you. Motion passes. Moving on to item eight, our second opportunity for some comments this evening. Any new registrations? Thank you. Item nine, our future agenda items are presented. Would anyone like to make an agenda request at this time? Item 10, our scheduled next meeting is also presented. And Dr. Salerno, thank you for sending out the October calendar grid for us. Jill, is there anything you'd like to highlight here? And we shall move on to item 11, adjournment. Motion made by Jeff and seconded by Diana to adjourn the September 20th for a new meeting and a notification for this discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. We are adjourned.